Counsel to order. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mayor Baker?
Excused.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Sperry?
Here.
Councilmember Curtis?
Present.
Councilmember Herbig?
Here.
Councilmember Danuski?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, if you'll rise and join me in the flag salute, Stacy Danuski will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, if there are any, if there are no objections to the agenda as recently published, or do we have to take a vote on these little changes?
I don't think so.
Okay. The agenda as presented, if there are no objections, the agenda will stand approved as presented. We have a presentation now. We have one of our long-term employees, Andrew Bauer, who is moving up to bigger and better things, moving on to the city of Redmond, and we're really sorry to lose him, but it's a great opportunity for Andrew to do so. Do we have a, do you have a certificate for him there?
Yeah, and can I?
Do you want to make the presentation?
Sure.
Okay, please.
Thank you. Yeah, we have a very hard-working and amazing employee who's put in 10 years with the city of Kenmore. And right here, as we're coming up on his 10-year mark, he's told us that he's being promoted and going to be working for another city. So, pretty sad for us, and we're going to miss him a lot, but we're also happy for him and what lies ahead for him professionally. And that's Andrew Bauer, and he's here. And his supervisor, Brian Hampson, in the Development Services Department, had a family emergency and couldn't make it tonight. But Brian wrote down some words that he asked me to share, and then I'll say a few things as well. Brian says that "I'm very thankful to have worked with Andrew for over the last six and a half years." Andrew's been here for 10. "And really get to know him. Andrew has a lot of good qualities, too many to name. He's a very nice, honest, and respectable person. As we look back at Kenmore over the past 10 years, we see Andrew has been instrumental to what we see today. Andrew has steered our city through times of change, from his participation in the many new developments and redevelopments, to his role in changing the community's perspective in the city. He's very good in encouraging initiative and cultivating teamwork between his coworkers and our customers. Andrew was very involved in creating and implementing improvements to streamline the development services processes. One of many examples is his participation in the city's LEAN process, performed on development services processes, and the resulting Municipal Excellence Achievement Award from the Association of Washington Cities. To name a few of the big projects Andrew has been the lead on: Kenmore Junior High redevelopment, Kenmore Village, including Kenmore Camera, Spencer 68, The Link, and the Town Green, The Lodge at St. Edward State Park, and many, many plats and subdivisions throughout the city. And I have just been thrilled to be able to work with Andrew. He is your consummate professional. He's a class act with the customers and with this organization, and it's just been a joy to serve with him. And so, Andrew, I want to publicly thank you for your 10 years of service to the city of Kenmore, and I'd like to give you this certificate."
It's been an honor serving the community and serving the council and working with such amazing staff, so thank you all. Thank you.
We now have a proclamation from the city of Kenmore regarding Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2016. And I want to read this for the record, into the record, and for those in the audience here and on television. "Whereas throughout October, communities across the country will mourn for those whose lives were taken by domestic violence, celebrate the tremendous progress victim advocates have made over the years, and connect with one another with a true sense of unity to end domestic violence. And whereas victims of domestic violence are not readily visible by their outward appearance, and whereas committed within the privacy of homes, domestic violence is a nearly invisible crime, although every one of us probably knows someone who has experienced it. And whereas when a family member is abused, it can have long-term damaging effects on the victim that can also leave a mark on the family, friends, and the community at large. And whereas millions of children are exposed to domestic violence in their homes, both as victims and witnesses each year in the United States. And while children can be remarkably resilient, children exposed to domestic violence are often physically, mentally, and emotionally impacted. Whereas being exposed to violence may impair a child's capacity for partnering and parenting later on in life, considering the cycle of violence, continuing the cycle of violence into the next generation. And whereas the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers, and it is sustained by societal indifference. And whereas every person who experiences domestic violence deserves a safe place for reporting and receiving needed services, and prevention efforts must be inclusive for everyone. Whereas no single program can change the environmental factors and norms that contribute to intimate partner violence, what work are comprehensive and multidisciplinary approaches that reframe the desired outcome of prevention as healthy behavior and healthy communities? And whereas the Washington State Domestic Violence Hotline, 1-800-562-6025, and the National Domestic Violence Hotline, 1-800-799-SAFE, and its website, www.thehotline.org, and other victim services provide lifesaving tools and immediate support to enable victims to find safety and to begin lives free of abuse, and also provide information for identifying abuse and steps to help a friend or a loved one through an abusive relationship. Whereas we can reach out to friends and loved ones who have suffered from domestic violence and tell them that they are not alone. Now therefore, I, Ellen Van Ness, acting for David Baker, Mayor of the City of Kenmore, City of Washington, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim October 2016 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Kenmore, and urge all citizens to actively work towards the elimination of domestic violence. And I think I mentioned to the council after coming back from the meeting in Kansas City, where we had some lengthy discussions about children witnessing violence in the home and in the community, and the impact it has on individuals throughout their lives. And if there was a way to minimize this domestic violence, it's a lion, a big share of the violence that children witness everywhere, every day, every month, not just October. And if we can reduce that, we can reduce the cycle of this reoccurring and minimize its impact on our youth that are growing up today. So. Next on the agenda is citizen comments. And this is an opportunity for you, the audience, to express your views on issues that are important to you and the community. Please limit your comments to three minutes. There are some lights over here. When the green light is on, you're free to speak. When the yellow light goes on, you've got 30 seconds, and when the red light goes on, you should be finished. So, will you call, will the clerk please call the first person?
As of right now, there's no one signed up.
Pardon me?
There's no one signed up right now.
No one has signed up. Would anyone, anybody like to address the council tonight? Okay, thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. Are there any additions, corrections, comments, concerns about the consent agenda? If not, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we wanted to change the order of the business agenda and do the walkways and waterways bond measure first, because people representing that are here with us at this time. So, we have Joanne Gregory, Finance Administration Director, Rob Kerlinsey, City Manager, Chris Overlees Public Works, and representatives from, I'll let Joanne do the introductions. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. If I could do a brief introduction and then turn it over to Jennifer. As you know, there is a proposed bond measure for voter approval on the November 8 ballot. It requires 60% voter approval in order to pass, and it proposes to do $19.75 million in capital improvements. It would include sidewalks and new bike lanes on Juanita Drive, and also 68th Avenue from the city's southern limit to the city's northern limit. It would also add open front, or open front, waterfront access improvements to three of the city's waterfront parks: Loggum Park, Rodeo Denderon Park, and Squire's Landing Parks. And it would also create trails and open space enhancements to those parks. And so, this bond measure is a proposed, bond measure, key word proposed, it has not yet been approved by the voters. But what we're going to show you tonight is things need to be put in place in the very near future in case it does pass. And so, that's why our bond counsel and Piper Jaffray are here tonight with Joanne, is to talk to you about the process of issuing bonds, should it be approved by voters, and the schedule and the plan to make it all happen if the bond measure passes. So, Joanne, do you want to add anything?
Thank you. Well, just a couple of comments. Good evening, Deputy Mayor and Counsel. So, the last action that I believe you took was in June, June 13, when you adopted ordinance 160422 to place the walkways and waterways, 19 million bond measure on the November 8, 2016 ballot. So after that occurred, there were a number of events that took place, which included forming the pro and con committees, and the preparation of the explanatory statement for the ballot, and submitting that to King County Elections. So that's all been done. Also had quite a number of public information, open houses, and meetings, and presentations, and we have more to come on the calendar. So those are ongoing. But as Rob mentioned, there are still a significant number of tasks between now and the election, and then subsequent to the election if the bond measure is successful. So at this time, I'd like to introduce directly to my right Deanna Gregory from Pacifica Law Group, and she'll discuss the timing and the approval process for an ordinance that would authorize the sale of the bonds if the measure is successful. And then to her right is Lindsay Savde of Piper Jaffray, and she'll review the schedule of events for you this evening.
Great. Mr. Mayor and Counsel, again, for the record, I'm Lindsay Savde with Piper Jaffray. Just by way of background, I work as the city's financial advisor on this transaction, so my role is to help guide the city through the process of issuing bonds. I have worked for Piper Jaffray and its predecessors for 17 and a half years now, and I work with cities from all over the state of Washington. So, as Joanne mentioned today, I think we want to start out by talking about the schedule, and I think a draft of the schedule was put into your packets. I don't think we need to go through every step in the schedule, but I just wanted to point out some of the key dates. And as the city manager pointed out, the reason that we are doing some of this work in advance, assuming we get your head nod today, is because to get on the county's tax rolls for next year, the county needs to know the amount that you want to levy prior to about the middle of December of this year. We could not issue bonds as early, we could wait and issue bonds sometime in 2017, but then your first tax collections wouldn't be until the beginning of, or I guess the middle of 2018. So, we, in situations like this where you have an issue on the November ballot, we like to do this work in advance so that if it does get approved by the voters, we're ready to go, and we can get you on the tax rolls for 2017. That said, there is a lot of work on this schedule, and neither Piper Jaffray nor Pacifica Law Group will charge the city for our time if the bond issue is not successful. We only get paid if the bond issue actually closes, so there is no financial risk to the city from that regard. The only cost that the city will potentially incur is the costs of plane tickets to go down to San Francisco to meet with Standard and Poor's, which is one of the credit rating agencies. The city hasn't had a credit rating in the past, and typically in situations like that where it's a first-time rating, there's a lot of value of meeting with the rating agencies in person. We sit in a room across a conference table and go through a prepared presentation that we'll put together. So the city has the option of waiting until the last minute to buy those plane tickets. The city can buy refundable plane tickets in advance, or the city could buy non-refundable plane tickets and then use that credit for something else. But that is a cost that the city would incur. Outside of that, we work for no charge. So, turning to the schedule, just a few dates that I will point out. We start out here on September 26, giving you the briefing on the ordinance and on this schedule. You can see that on September 26, we also contemplated sending the request for proposal out to underwriters. City staff has elected to do an RFP process to hire an underwriter. The underwriter is the firm that will actually sell the bonds in, towards the end of November, or I guess in the beginning of December, assuming that they are approved. There are several underwriting firms out there, and the city decided that to do an RFP process would be the most fair and transparent way to hire an underwriter. I did not want to send out that RFP until we have at least council's concurrence that you're all on board and think that this schedule is a good idea, although there's no formal action for you to take tonight. Your staff will have a lot of work to do over the next six to eight weeks, getting the documents prepared. One of the primary documents that we create is called the Preliminary Official Statement, or the POS. That's similar to prospectives, a prospectus that a mutual fund company would use. It outlines all of the information there is to know about the city so that an investor can make an informed decision about whether or not they want to purchase your bonds. So you'll see that there are several steps related to drafts of that that will be circulated to the financing team for review. There will also be a bond ordinance that will be circulated to the financing team, and ultimately to the city council, and Deanna will talk a little bit more about that. We are planning on selecting an underwriter on or about October 24, and the underwriter is really the last person on our team that we will need to include. The underwriter will have some time to comment on the documents before they are finalized. We have election date on November 8, and then November 9, we anticipate having the final version of the bond ordinance available for council packets. And then, at this point, we are planning to talk to Standard and Poor's on Friday, November 11, which happens to be a holiday, so kudos to your staff for being willing to sacrifice one of their holidays to get this bond issue to market as quickly as possible. You'll have the first reading of the bond ordinance on November 14. The passage of the ordinance, assuming you all approve it, on November 21. The election gets certified on November 29, and then we plan to sell bonds on December 1. So your interest rate is not locked until December 1, but once December 1 rolls around, we do lock your interest rate, and then the proceeds would be available to the city a couple of weeks after that. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the bond sale or the schedule, or I can turn it over to Deanna to talk a little bit about the ordinance itself.
Thank you. I have a question. What, so what, on the selection of an underwriter for the bond, what criteria would a city like ours look for in what would make an underwriter stand out, or if you could fill me in on that a little bit?
Sure. Well, I think there are a number of things that we will ask about. We'll ask about their experience selling bonds in the state of Washington. We will ask about their experience selling bonds similar to those that the city plans to sell, which are voted general obligation bonds that I think will end up being designated bank-qualified, which just means you end up, you plan to issue $10 million or less of tax-exempt bonds in 2016. We will ask about the team that the underwriter will provide, including who the lead banker will be, who their analyst will be, and who their actual underwriter is, the person who's responsible for assigning interest rates to the bonds. And we will ask about costs and what their fee will be. And so, based upon, and those are, I think there are maybe six or seven questions, but those are the main categories that we're focused on. And then staff and financial advisor myself will get together after we receive the proposals, we'll review those. If the staff is interested, we can hold interviews with the potential underwriting candidates to see if any of them are, if there's any more information to get from them based upon an in-person meeting, and then a selection will be made.
Okay, thank you. And is there much of a difference then in the actual interest rate that the different underwriters would recommend or suggest? Or how, I thought that was more of a market-driven number, but are you saying that the underwriter actually will help set that or determine that exactly, or can you tell me how that works? I mean, I guess my question is, why wouldn't, why wouldn't it be in our best interest to obviously have the lowest interest rate possible? And what is the downside, or I'm trying to understand that process a little bit.
Well, there is no downside to, I mean, of course, of course, your goal is to have the lowest interest rate possible. And one of the ways that we try to achieve that is by, you know, having this RFP process and determining based upon the experience that the underwriters have, trying to understand who is going to provide the lowest cost of financing. It is next to impossible to say on any given day that the interest rate is the absolute lowest interest rate that's out there, because there are no two comparable bond issues selling in the market at any time. So what we do is we have our own underwriter, and our own underwriter works with the underwriter that you hire through this RFP process to determine where the market is and what interest rates should be for this bond issue based upon comparable sales that are in the market, you know, the other issues that are close. There are underwriters out there who don't do a very good job of pricing bonds, and a city could end up paying, it could end up paying a higher interest rate than it needs to pay. So one of our rules is to make sure you're hiring somebody who's qualified to sell your bonds. And, and I guess through that process, we do the best job we can to get the city the lowest cost of financing that's available.
Okay, thank you. And just one last question.
Sure.
Are we subject to the same rules then when we go out for RFPs on other, like Public Works processes or anything? Is there any similarity? I see a head shaking, no, so I'll assume not then.
Yes, no.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sperry?
Thank you. The, is there any phasing or staging of the bond amounts? Is it going to be all, it's like, what does that look like?
I think at this point, we've talked with staff, and certainly Robert, Joanne is welcome to chime in, but we've talked to staff about having two series of bonds, one that would be issued in 2016, and the other one would be issued in 2019. Because when you issue bonds, you have to have a reasonable expectation that you'll spend the bond proceeds within three years. And so, the initial feedback we received from staff is that that would be hard to do, and so we plan on locking in the interest rates for the first portion of the bonds this year, and then the second series in 2019. And I think at this point, the discussions have been that it'll be split about 50/50, but I think that can change depending on the final project schedule and timing.
Thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
So I understand from that, then, when we issue the second half approximately, the rate could be different.
It will be different.
Yeah, and those, that's an estimate of when those two series will be issued. They might be four years apart, they might be two years apart. So what she was saying is just an estimate.
I had a question about bond rating. Kenmore doesn't owe any money to anybody now. How's that impact our bond rating and our ability to get a good interest bond?
That really helps your bond rating from the standpoint that one of the things that rating agencies look at is your overall debt that you're carrying. They look at your debt relative to your assessed value. They look at debt per capita, so there are a lot of, I guess, items that they consider that are related to your current outstanding debt. They also look at things like your general fund balance. They look, they have factors both that you can control and things that you cannot control. So they look at your management and your city council, and, you know, do you have generally a city council that works well together, or is your city council one where people stand up and yell at each other, which happens in the state of Washington. I don't like those meetings very much. You know, they want to know that your management has experience managing a city, and that, you know, people know what they're doing. And then they look at your audits. Do you have clean audits? Do you have, do you budget conservatively, or do you budget very aggressively? And as I said, fund balance, and your ability to sustain your services that you have now. So there are lots of different things that the rating agencies will look at, but certainly current debt levels is important, and the fact that you have none is a gold star in your court.
Yeah, so all those things that you listed, I think we do pretty well at.
I think you'll end up with a very good rating.
Good, thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay. And you don't need any action from us, so we've got to move on to Deanna Gregory now, the legal aspect of this.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you. Again, I'm Deanna Gregory, I'm a partner with Pacifica Law Group. We serve as the city's bond counsel. So we are your attorneys. I am one of your attorneys. And so what we do in this overall transaction is we serve on your behalf. We review the preliminary official statement on the city's behalf that Lindsay mentioned that Piper Jaffray is going to prepare. We review the final official statement. We keep an eye on, even though we're not financial advisors, a little disclaimer there, we do keep an eye on the numbers, the pricing, and all other aspects of what else is going on in the transaction, from how we look at it, which is from a state law, securities law, and a federal tax law perspective. And at the end of the day, we will not only prepare your ordinance, which I'll discuss in a moment, but at the end of the day, what we do is we deliver an unqualified legal opinion addressed to you all and the underwriter, and it's also relied on, by investors, on the legality, enforceability of the bonds, and also on the tax-exempt status of the bonds. And so that opinion, at the end of the day, is what we kind of narrow all of our due diligence down to and all of our legal work down to. So you have that opinion that is actually attached to the official statement that's delivered out to investors. Investors do rely, like I said, they do rely on that. So in terms of the schedule, we are very much part of many of the processes that's going to happen between now to get to a successful closing for the proposed bonds. You'll see on here a few things, tax due diligence, that's for us to work with staff to make sure that the proposed bonds are wiretied and fit within the parameters required by federal tax law, and of course, the proposed uses of those bonds. We've already started these conversations, and so we're very much on our way there. Also, you'll see when we come down to November 9, we'll have the bond ordinance included in your council packet. in your council packet, so you have time to review that prior to the first reading on November 14th. Because the bonds, the two tranches of bonds that are being proposed, we anticipate that they'll, they will take place a number of years apart. At this moment, we're expecting to have two bond ordinances, so this first bond ordinance will only address this first series of bonds if the vote is successful in November. So we will be back a few years from now, but this one will, this one will just identify the, the first, you know, tranche, if you will. So the bond ordinance really does a number of things. It is the official action taken by this council as legislative body of the city to authorize the issuance of the bonds. It's done by ordinance because that's what state law wants us to do, and it does require your affirmative confirmation and approval for the issuance of debt. Debt is one of those powers in Washington that cannot be implied, it has to be given to you. City, of course, has express authority to issue the debt, but it does have to be done by the council. The bond ordinance also, and will contain a number of covenants. A lot of them are for federal tax law purposes, again, those ongoing requirements with the use of your proceeds. There are some others for federal securities law requirements, and then also state law. So a lot of those will be outlined in your ordinance. There's also a pledge, of course, of the full faith and credit of the city, assuming, again, that the vote is successful in November. The bonds are expected to be paid from the voter-approved property tax levies. And so the bond ordinance will really lay all that out, because at the end of the day, the investors can turn back to this ordinance as essentially a contract between the city and, and investors on really what their source of their security, what the credit is from their perspective. Lindsay mentioned the underwriter. The underwriter will be named in the ordinance, and the, the ordinance will also authorize the city to sign a bond purchase contract with the underwriter. The underwriter is the one that sells your bonds, as Lindsay mentioned, out on the secondary market to ultimate investors, but from the city's perspective, the city is really selling all of the bonds, if any are issued, to the underwriter. So that is done as a negotiated arms-length transaction between the city and the underwriting firm that's selected, and we review the bond purchase contract on the city's behalf. And they're pretty standardized here in the state of Washington, so we don't expect, regardless of who the underwriting firm is, we don't expect a lot of surprises. But it is a, it is a negotiated contract. And so the ordinance will authorize the individual, the designated individual, to sign that bond purchase contract with the underwriter on behalf of the city. So speaking of the sale of the bonds, one of the things, another thing that this bond ordinance does is that it authorizes really the sale of the bonds at a later moment in time. Washington law, what, a great thing about Washington law is that it gives issuers such as the city a number of different ways to authorize issuance of bonds. One way is we could price the bonds and get those interest rates and bring an ordinance to you on the date of, on the date of sale. Part of the problem with that is that at that point, you're pretty much committed. You've already sold your bonds, if you will. And so if there was ever any kind of hiccup, it would be problematic. Also, a lot of times, the sale date, for example, the date when those interest rates and the market's looking really good for you, may not be on a date that is a regular council meeting. And so Washington law gives some other, gives, gives the authority to really approve your ordinance and then delegate the authority to approve the final terms of the bonds to a designated individual. So what we anticipate in terms of this bond ordinance is for the council to take action on November 21st, and that will be the last official action for this initial tranche of bonds that the council will take. But the final terms of the bonds will be delegated to be approved by, we assume either the city manager or the finance director, we haven't worked out those details yet, subject to the parameters that are set out in the ordinance. So for example, the ordinance will have a not-to-exceed principal amount. So so long as the sale comes back under that not-to-exceed amount, which I think we anticipate somewhere around $10 million, the, the sale could move forward. There's also a high, a top interest rate, also some other sale parameters that just go into kind of how the bonds are structured. And then, of course, certification. The ordinance, it will be proposed and considered by the council after the election, but prior to confirmation of the election results. And so we'll have the sale be then contingent on the successful, the favorable, I should say, the certification of those results. So what that allows you to do is it allows the council to take action ahead of time in, in the schedule of events, delegate the items to the individuals, and then really pick that date in the, in the pricing, in the timeline down the road for pricing that's really in the best interest of the city. And so it really is one-stop shopping from your perspective. It will be, like I said, the only official action that the council will take, absent the market doing something that we don't expect. And if everything goes smooth, and as we all expect, then, then you'll just get a report back from a staff member on the results of the sale, and, and that will be it. So after the ordinance is approved, again, the bonds are sold to the underwriter, we get to sign the bond purchase contract, and then as Lindsay said, there's a couple of weeks between when those interest rates are locked in, and the city actually gets the proceeds. During that time, we again work with staff to, to prepare a variety of closing certificates, and we get those signed up, so we'll have to, we'll have a few of you involved at that moment, but just for signature purposes. And then your money is wired to you on the day of closing. So from that's, from our side, what, what we do in the process, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Yes.
So what happens if we sell the bonds to the underwriters and then they can't sell them?
Do you want to answer this? You want me to?
I, I can. So what happens during the order period is, or when we price bonds, we have an order period that lasts for usually one to two hours, and during that time period, the underwriter solicits orders for the bonds. If, at the end of the order period, the underwriter does not have enough orders for the bonds, at that time, the underwriter will make a decision about whether they think they should increase interest rates and do another, and have a secondary order period if they should increase interest rates and just take their bonds into their inventory. Or in rare occasions, if they don't have enough bonds sold at all, they may say, let's not do this bond issue today, and let's come back on another day. So that, the, the third scenario happens occasionally in incredibly volatile markets. We don't see that very often. But it is very common to see underwriters adjust interest rates either up or down by a couple of basis points, depending on how much interest they have for the bonds. But we have every expectation that the underwriter will step up and take bonds into their inventory if they have, you know, somewhere between 60 and 70% of the bonds sold.
They sell that larger of a percent in a couple hours?
Mm-hmm. Well, the underwriters do pre-marketing, so, you know, the official statement comes out about a week before you actually sell your bonds. And during that period, the salespeople are calling investors, and so they kind of have investors lined up, and they know who's going to purchase bonds.
This is faster than Craigslist.
Yeah, for sure. Well, you know, the, the, what is it? The calendar this week for bond sales, I think I heard this morning, was about $10 billion in the country just for this week. So it's, there's some pretty big bond issues that go out there. There's a big market for bonds. That actually might be the 30-day supply. Anyway, it's a big market.
Councilmember Smith?
So I, once that sale is made with the city, though, there's no exposure to the city at that point. That's all the risk on the underwriter. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Your interest rates are locked, and the underwriter assumes the risk.
Can you also speak to the ability for local residents to purchase bonds?
Yeah, we, we can definitely ask that question as part of the RFP process and let underwriters let us know how they would like to handle that. Typically, what happens is a, an underwriter will put an ad in the local newspaper, letting citizens know who they can call to obtain a copy of the, the preliminary official statement, and who they would need to call if they're interested in ordering or placing an order for bonds. What we typically find out is that once the local investors see what the interest rate is on their tax exempt bonds, that they say, thanks, but no thanks. But in any case, no city council member should purchase bonds.
There may be--
Lindsay would make a great bond lawyer.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's why a bond lawyer--
Yes. Because there is a potential conflict of interest, because you all are setting the parameters for, for the bonds themselves, for the, for the active terms at the end of the day, we strongly, strongly, strongly recommend that no council members do purchase bonds in their own, for their own portfolios.
That we do not.
Do not. Correct.
But there may be some citizens that despite the low interest rate may want to invest in this because it's investing in their community. What I've seen in the past is, in addition to having an ad in the paper, you can also have a poster board set on an easel in the city hall lobby, letting people know that they can purchase bonds.
As long as it has the appropriate disclosure language on it. So if the city wants to, the city staff wants to do that, let's just make sure that it's all properly disclosed.
You would make good bond counsel.
Right? Oh, no. An easel here. She made a comment on tax law earlier, a tax lawyer, too.
I also want to point out that I failed to say this, and my apologies, is that in the event that the market does turn on, on the sale, and it comes to the point where the bonds cannot be sold within the true interest cost, within the parameters that are set within the bond ordinance, then we will have to come back to council, and we will have to get additional approval at that point. Also, the, the delegation period will be limited, and so the ability to sign that bond purchase contract will only be, or the authority, I should say, to sign that bond purchase contract will only be for a set period of time. Usually, it's about four to six months. We've gone up to a year, but I think in this situation, considering that the plan is, that probably should be sufficient to go to a shorter period of time. So again, if the bonds cannot be sold within that window, it's not as though there'll be carte blanche, you know, authority forever going forward. We will have to come back to council. So those are the, the two instances, we'll come back to council.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Well, I thank you very much for sharing all this with you. It's very enlightening. We haven't done this before, so--
Sure. Well, and I would like to say thank you for all of the great questions, because oftentimes we go to city council meetings and get none. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us tonight. The next item on the agenda, then, was priority-based budgeting. Ms. Gregory, you can, you're still up, our finance and administration director.
Now, while Joanne's getting ready, I can kill, kill a little bit of time by giving an intro. Is that okay, Joanne?
Yes, sure.
All right. So as you know, and for the public's benefit, we do a biennial budget, a two-year budget. And so we are in the thick of things in preparing and getting ready the proposed preliminary 2017-2018 biennial budget. It's a calendar year budget, going from January 1st, 2017, through December 31st, 2018. And the numbers and how much gets budgeted for each department and program and the revenues, we assume that's all very, very important. And we also believe that how we get to the numbers is just as important. And so at the last biennial budget process for the 15-16 biennial budget, we introduced a new system of getting to the best policies in your budget and the best way to allocate funding, and that's through what we call priority-based budgeting, or PBB. And this is a model that's used in a bunch of other cities across the nation through the Center for Priority-Based Budgeting in Denver, Colorado. And I was introduced to this model and this firm at a, at an ICMA conference several years ago, and I was really impressed with the way they approached things and the way they base budget building on what the communities and the council's priorities are. And so they've developed a fairly sophisticated, sophisticated way of looking at our programs holistically, scoring them based on established community goals and criteria, and then seeing how all things shake out based on that scoring and how we're spending our money. And so it was very enlightening when we did it two years ago, and so enlightening and helpful that I thought it was worth continuing it on and doing it again for this biennial budget. And so with that, Joanne, I'll turn it back over to you to talk about what's been so far, done so far, and the results that you've come up with tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening again, deputy mayor and council. So back, welcome back to priority-based budgeting. We last had a conversation about PBB, I'm going to call it PBB, it's easier to say, at the council retreat in June. And at that time, I identified for you the, the progress that we'd made so far, which was to develop and update our inventory of programs, all the programs that represent all the work that the city does. We came up with about 382 programs, and I believe I have a list of those for you in your council packet. So after we did that, we identified all of RFPs and our personnel costs, and by the time we met in June, that's how much we had accomplished. After June, after all of those steps were completed, we allocated all those costs, personnel and otherwise, to the programs. Then we went through a scoring process. Each department scored their programs against the city results as a measure of how well each program achieved those. And as a reminder, here is a list of the priority-based budgeting community results that the city council devised and, and validated in January and reviewed again in June. There are seven of those. And there are also a number of what we call governance results, which are how the organization governs itself, and against these different criteria of transparent government, managing resources. And all programs were also reviewed against attributes such as, what is the reliance on the city to provide that program? Is the city mandated to provide that program? What's the cost recovery, et cetera? So all 382 programs were evaluated against these. The main ones, again, being the community results, such as the access to quality cultural, recreation, educational, leisure opportunities, et cetera. I won't, I won't read through all of those for you. I'm sure by now you're pretty, pretty familiar with them. So after all of the departments scored their work against these results, then cross-departmental teams of city employees met and reviewed those scores and did what we call a peer review. So they went through those programs again, evaluated them against the attributes and the, and the results to see if they would have scored them the same way. And at the end of that process, we looked at those that were different, and the leadership, the management team did this. We met and looked at the differences and made a determination about what the score should be. This year, for the first time, we made a run at capital projects. So this was, this was an interesting process, and I'll take you through that in a moment. There are still, we discovered a few wrinkles to work out with that. It was not as easy as it intuitively seemed at first. It was, one, one question was, what capital project should you include? We started out with the, every project in the comp plan and the CIP plan, and the whole universe of projects that the city could implement now or in the future. Or should we look at just the six-year plan? Or should we just look at the two-year budget plan? And in the end, we settled, just today, on using the six-year CIP or the proposed CIP for six years, and included those projects and costs. I also felt that maybe some of the attributes that we used to, to evaluate our daily work weren't really applicable to capital projects, so maybe doing this another time, we try to develop some criteria or some attributes that were more specific to, to capital programs. But they're in here, and you'll be able to see how that worked out. So once we had all this data in our tool, we were able to run what is called the resource alignment, you know, resource allocation diagnostic tool, also called the RAD for short, which I'll take you through in just a second. So what this is tonight is just a first glance at the outcome of all that we've been doing, because over the last few months, it's pretty much all been data-driven. We've just been entering data and more data and more data, and we just completed this tool. So we haven't spent a lot of time yet analyzing it and filtering it and, you know, asking the questions that, that are probably appropriate-- the questions that are probably appropriate as we start to learn more about it. But I thought I would show you just a few of the features and the outcomes that you might find interesting and maybe it will spark your interest and, you know, lead to some further questions or discussions as we go through the budget process. And one of the ideas that we have for taking this forward is that for a public process, public process at a public meeting, is what I'm trying to say, we were thinking about having an open house prior to possibly one of our budget public hearings where we could start maybe an hour early and have an open house about priority-based budgeting and ask people to come in and, you know, learn about it and maybe do some scoring of their own and introduce the concept to them in a similar way to what we did two years ago. And then we also plan to use it as we go through the budget process, not only working with the departments on their budgets, but when we come back to you to present our departmental budgets, where it makes sense, we'll bring in some of this priority-based budgeting outcomes and share those with you as well. So I will open this up now for you to see, this radical RAD tool that shows how the city's programs are falling into the different quartiles. So if you remember us talking about quartiles in the past, there are four. And a quartile determines, the placement of the quartiles determines what programs are having, have the highest impact on achieving the results that you want for the city. So programs that fall into quartile one are those that are giving you the best results toward achieving your results. Programs that fall into quartile four are those that are not achieving the results as well as the others, the programs in the other quartiles. So this is how it fell out for the city this biennial. This includes the general fund, the street fund, and the surface water fund, which is the reason for a $29 million budget. So it was our 15 and 16 budget for all three funds. And you can see that out of that $29 million, seven and a half million are in quartile one, 13 in quartile two, and six and a half in quartile three, and two in quartile four. Now, some of the things that you can do to delve deeper into these quartiles is you can look at maybe just the general fund and say, okay, of all the general fund programs, how do they stack up? And that would be your result. Or you can look at the street fund, for instance, and how are those results being achieved in the street fund? You can go back to all funds. You can look at it by department as well. So if you wanted to, say, look at the community development programs by themselves, you can see what quartile they fall into. And then you may want to know, well, what is in this quartile four? Why do I have money being spent on programs in quartile four? You can take a look at that in more, you know, more detail. You can filter out the other quartiles. And then down here are the programs that come out of community development that had very low scores. So you can.
And in this case, there are only two?
There are only two.
For community development?
Right, for community development department. So community developments and wellness, for instance, is not a high-achieving program, is basically what it's saying. Or you can look at it in another way. You can say, what are in quartile one? Let's see, how would I do that? These would be the higher achieving programs. $497,000 of that budget are in programs that are achieving the best results for the city and they would be listed here. And so you can scroll through them, you can pick one and say, oh, imagine Kidmore is in there, let's look at that. How did it score against all those seven results? Well, here are the scores. They were all threes, which means it's a pretty high, high-impact program for achieving results in all of these areas for the city. So that's without getting too, you know, too much detail here. I just wanted to give you this overview and see if at this point you had any questions about what I'm showing you right now.
Thank you, Joanne. So actually, right where you're at, where it's about the mandate and the reliance and demand and population serve. So it seems to me that there was some aspect of that that contributed to the score. Can you refresh me on that?
Sure. We not only looked at all of the programs as to how they achieve these results, these community resorts, results or governance results, but we also looked at them as to how reliant on the city we are to provide that program. So we call those basic program attributes. So if this is a program that only the city can provide, it got a high score. If there were other, maybe private organizations that could provide it or other partners that could provide it, it got a different score. We also looked at the demand for the program. Is this a, is this a program where there's an increasing demand for it? Or has the demand not changed or fallen off? So that would affect the score. So these are those attributes that you're referring to here. And so if we go back to this page, you can say, well, I want to see all of the programs that had a really high score because they were mandated to do those. And so you can, you can filter on all of those as well. And I haven't explored those yet, so I can't, you know, give you a really good example. But there are things, public records requests are obviously mandated, Title VI reporting's mandated, audits are mandated. A lot of work that we do is mandated to be done by us. So you can play with all of these filters and narrow your focus down to any one of those or any combination of those.
Thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
Thank you so much for all the work that you did to produce this.
I should say, it was not all me, though.
Right.
I brought the entire staff along with me through this process.
The whole team gets the effort. As I looked at this, I thought the two big questions is why did the level four go up so much? And does it make sense? So that's usually the question, the first question I ask when I look at big budget issues. And I think what I see here is that it represents our philosophy. So the results are what we set up will be the glasses through which we look at our budget. So that's how things eventually end up in higher-low categories based on our worldview. We're a new city, an aggressive city, a building city. We aren't really into maintenance phase yet. We're in growth phase. So I think that's one reason some of the maintenance-y kinds of things fall down to the bottom because that's not really that important right now. And I'm okay with that. So I'm okay to just say, you know, that's the phase our city's in. I think, though, I still am asking the question, why did the level four, the quartile four, go up fivefold? And as best I understand, we didn't change our results, so we didn't change our criteria by which we measure things. The only thing we changed was the groupings. So there were some things that you subdivided differed or your group differed or.
We did.
Can you think of anything else that could have produced this? Because what I'm seeing is a whole bunch of police small programs. And so if you subdivide too small, you got a little teeny program competing against the big program and it's going to be more in the maintenance, oh, yeah, it's kind of down there, but it doesn't, it doesn't hit enough results to qualify for anything very high. Can you explain it any other way than kind of how I'm viewing it?
Well, I think how you're viewing it is a big part of it. I want to say right up front that there's no right or wrong way for this to come out. The purpose is to start conversations like that, like you just mentioned, well, this is the way it is, but I'm okay with that. I understand it's the way it is and I'm okay with that. If you're not okay with it, then, you know, we can talk further and make other decisions. But that's really the key here is to inquire and discover and talk about what these results are telling you. Now, in quartile four, I haven't looked, I haven't looked very hard yet at what is in there. There are a whole bunch of police activities that are part of the contract, they're in the contract, we can't do anything about them. They're just functions that are rolled into that contract. So in a way, it's almost like they're mandated because they have to be part of that contract. Things that we can't say, well, we don't want this and we don't want that. They come with the package.
And an example is SWAT team. SWAT team is in quartile four and it got a four, the highest score, on safety, but on all the other things like culture and things, it got zeros. Well, okay, that's one way to look at it, but another way to look at it is you need law and order, or you need SWAT teams to have law and order. And if you don't have law and order, you have chaos. And if you don't have chaos, you can't have any of those other great programs. And so one way to look at it is give SWAT team all fours. So it's just a, it's just different ways to look at it. So this shows that this model is very useful, but not perfect. There's little things about it that you might go, oh, well, I could see how that could, actually should score higher. But for the most part, this is giving us a pretty good picture of our programs and services.
Right. There's no right, right or wrong. It just gives you that information and you can decide, is that acceptable? Do I understand it or not?
And I have some more detailed questions, but I'll wait and let everybody speak first.
Okay.
Councilmember Danuski?
I guess my question, comments, just been pretty much talked about, which was the quartile four, and just making sure that we use, you know, we look at the fours and make sure that we know why they're fours and it's just hitting one goal, it's safe and secure, but yeah, I mean SWAT teams and search and rescue and fire investigation, I like them. So I just want to make sure we're all noticing why they're, that they might be a quartile four because they're only hitting one of those results.
Yeah.
And that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Herbie?
I just wanted to confirm the attachment four here that we're looking at or that I'm looking at and what was provided, that that's this year's scoring? Is that?
I think attachment four was the current model, yes.
That included, so you added in CIP?
I've added CIP since.
Okay.
Yeah. I printed that out last week before we had the capital finished.
Okay. And I was flipping through there and I, you know, I see capital projects, I see Target Zero, I see things like that. I don't see, you know, I know we put money aside specifically for sidewalks and that sort of thing, but maybe it's just not separate as a program. I'm not sure. But I know that it is specifically called out in one of our goals, but I don't see it anywhere in the list of programs that we're funding and weighing against each other. Am I, did, one, did I miss something because I very well could have? It's a lot of text here. And two, if I didn't, is there a way to, for us to address that? Because I think it's a priority for, I think it's a priority for us and I think it needs to be able to compete with everything else.
No, I agree. And I can show you the capital piece now.
Okay.
We had not finished the capital piece when the packet went out.
Fair enough.
So I can show it to you live. I printed out what I has to just give you a sense of what we were going to look at. But we can take this model now and we can go to capital projects.
Are there, are there any more questions before we move on?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Councilmember Smith?
I can't remember, I think you've explained how this breaks up, but when I look at something like, for instance, on the attachment four, and if you take, there's a number of subjects under here that have multiple ratings, and one of them would be affordable housing, for instance, where it falls into three different categories from city manager to development services to community development, and yet the range is also ranked from twos to threes. And so it's, I don't really know what's being considered, that's, what part of it's driving it to a three or what part's driving it up to a two in these, because there is a fairly decent range there.
You mean a variation in the scores?
Yes, in the score range.
Well, for one thing, you'll see it mentioned multiple times because multiple departments have some role in affordable housing. So the role of that department in affordable housing is being evaluated and scored. And some may not have a critical role in that program, others may have a very direct and essential role in that program. So it could lead to a variety of scores depending on which department you'll look at. You'll see that with public records requests, you'll see it with service requests, covering the reception desk and a number of things. And we can filter those at some point, too, where you want, if you want to see common programs across the organization, we can look at that and not only see what the scores are, but see what the costs are. So because multiple departments might have a hand in affordable housing, that department has to bear some cost of that program, too. So we wanted to make sure we accounted for that. It's not just the city manager's department that is dealing with affordable housing, but there's a component that community development spends on it, there's a component that development services spends on it. So we have to capture that. And in the end, we can pull it all together and see what is the total impact on the organization.
So I guess what I'm trying to figure out then is when, if you make a change to that, or how are you, and how you prioritize that in the budgeting, how is that going to affect each one of those individual departments, then? I'm having a hard time understanding how.
How this will translate into our budget?
How this translates into our budget decision.
Well, if it's likely scoring a variety in the twos, threes, and ones, twos, and threes. And if the city believes that that is still a valid, essential program to offer and participate in, it will continue to do so.
So it won't really matter then if it's a two or a three and if it's spread out and it's got, you know, a 15 range, as long as it's not in the four is basically what you're saying, then it really isn't, okay? And that's kind of how I understood, I'm just, I'm trying to understand how our budget decision actually impacts those three different scores. And that's, that's the part I was struggling with.
They would impact the budget decision if you saw one program consistently come up in quartile four. And then you talked about, why are we doing this? Are we spending too much money on this? Is it giving us the results that we want? I don't think affordable housing's in that situation, but there might be some others.
Right.
So then when you go to prepare your budget, you could, you can have a conversation about whether you want to maybe cut back on that service level or do something different and allocate those dollars somewhere else. But it's not as, as cut and dry as, okay, it's in a quadrant three, so we're, we might not budget for it. It just opens up some more information so you can look at it a little differently and then still make your budget decision.
Okay, thank you.
I hope that.
No, it does. It's actually, my question is pretty abstract. And so with such an abstract question, I would anticipate a rather abstract answer. You did the best you could under the circumstances.
You fulfilled expectations.
Yes.
Again, it's, this is, this is not an exact.
Right.
An exact science. It's, you know, all the scores are subjective. But in the, in the context of all the scores and all the people looking at it, you start to find some trends and some things that you want to investigate further.
Dr. Curtis?
So looking at some of the specifics, and I'm not sure that we need to change anything, but I can't imagine the place functioning without a reception desk. So even though that ended up in number four, there's something about the model that's devaluing what those folks do at your reception desk. So let's let that one go and let it sit where it does, but we know it's wrong. Software maintenance, I would also agree, or say that that doesn't belong in a number four as well. If you don't maintain your software and you let it, you know, get old and dysfunctional, we've experienced that. It affects your productivity, your ability to get work done, all kinds of things. There were a couple, though, well, actually three, that I thought to myself, well, if we could get more money from them, would they become more valuable? So for instance, the gambling tax collection, the notary services, and the facilities rental. So if we raised the rates on those three and we weren't giving them away practically for free, would that make a difference?
It probably would make a difference. It would, at least it would. It would, at least it would increase its score in cost recovery. There's an attribute for cost recovery. So, you know, likely in the development service room, for instance, the, the time invested in permitting and plan review and a lot of that work is recovered through, through fees. There are some things we do that aren't, but that's one criteria that tends, can drive up a cost or, or a score. Or just encourage you to keep it because you want to continue to offer it, but maybe you would like to recover a little bit more cost from it.
Because I know our Evergreen has some retreats here, and the facility rental is so low, it's like ridiculously low. So, I wouldn't feel guilty if we had to pay a little more. But as a citizen, I get to, you know, rent it for a really reasonable rate. The gambling tax, do we have any authority to raise how much of that we keep?
Which?
The gambling tax collection?
I believe, oh, I'm not.
Because it seems like there was a, this is a discussion from many, many years ago. It seems like there was some variable rate, and it seems like we didn't, we weren't taxing at the highest rate.
That could be. I, I don't know off the top of my head today.
Because I'd be interested in taxing it higher if it's in the number four and it's, and we aren't recovering our costs and we have some flexibility, I would say, "Let's look at that one."
Okay, thank you.
So, that was my detailed questions.
Thank you.
City manager.
I'm sorry, I was conferring with our city attorney. What's the question?
Well, you wanted to say something.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. Back to councilmember Smith's question about how it guides us in policy. One thought I was going to say is that, so this scoring was done with existing programs within existing resources? So, in that context, it's, a lot of it, it's kind of a validating tool and making sure that there isn't anything really strangely out of whack. But the tool becomes even more valuable in an add or a cut scenario. So, if our revenues dropped substantially and then we had to make some serious cuts, then this tool would be even more useful. Same, if we wanted to add new programs with limited resources, then how would the new programs stack up against existing programs?
Exactly.
Dr. Curtis.
Sorry to keep asking questions. One more comment on why quartile one went up so much. The, the last time we were measuring one year, this time it was biennial, and I understand that would sort of double things. But there could be something quirky about only looking at one year that it didn't represent half of the expenses?
Oh, definitely, because.
So, there could be a, an artifact of just getting into it for the first time. So, that may not really have been representative.
That's possible, depending upon which one year of the two-year biennium, you know, you budget or something actually occurs. So, I haven't gone back to discover that, but that does definitely make sense. And there's one more little feature on here, and there's many, many things you can do, but I thought this is, don't, don't read too much into this, but I'm going to show you anyway. You can do a comparison with other jurisdictions who have developed their model and are within 50% more or less than your budget, and you can see how your quartiles match up with those. And I thought this was pretty cool because it showed our quartile four is less than the mean of those other organizations. Our quartile three is just about right on, within 1%, and then our ones and twos, they're, they're balanced differently between one and two, but those are your most significant programs, and in total, that's a pretty close match to the mean of the other organizations, too.
And again, these are, these other organizations are customers of Center for Priority-Based Budgeting.
Yes.
Meaning that they have the, the vision and the initiative to also go through a similar process. In other words, they're cool cities like us.
Like us.
So, we're, we're comparing ourselves, a cool city, with other cool cities.
Those last. I think it's worthwhile knowing that the reason we're doing this is just another way of looking at one's budget, rather than the traditional way of looking at last, the last budget and saying, "Okay, let's increase everything 10% or whatever," based on the, you know, how it was set in the past. This is closer to what is touted as zero-based budgeting, where every time you redo the budget, everybody starts off with zero, and you evaluate the need and value of what they're asking for and then determine how much you're going to spend on it. Rather than continuing to increase it like our federal government does, if we cut the budget in federal, we're, we're reducing the amount of the increase based on previous expenditures. And, and that, that, that tends to foster, "Let's spend everything we're allotted because if we don't spend it all, we won't get as much next time," and all that sort of thing. This puts a priority on how it, how it's needed, whether it's a valuable expenditure to the, to the citizens and the city. So, that's just another way of looking at it, just like in orthodontic diagnosis, we look at models, we look at the teeth, we look at the pictures of the teeth, we look at head X-rays. And each one of those diagnostic tools is another way of looking at the same problem and deciding what you want to do about it. So, that, to me, is the value of this. Thank you.
Thank you. No, I think that's why they call it the, a diagnostic, a diagnostic tool, because it gives you just that. And I also think from the community's point of view, it's easier for them to understand that our resources, our, our funds are doing these things. They're performing these programs rather than this line item and that line item and this supplies and blah, blah, blah. But it means, you know, defines for them more specifically in a more meaningful way where the dollars are going than in a line item budget.
Now, that was a term that left me, the line item budgeting, what is traditionally done, and that's what everybody did before this came along. And this gives another perspective on things, which helps. So, you want to move along to?
Yeah, if, if you're ready, I'll jump over to the capital so you can see the capital side.
At this point? Okay, go ahead.
So, they, they developed this, this piece of the tool at our request. It was hard to believe that we were the only ones that might be, be clamoring for this, but, so it worked, it works sort of well. It's not perfect yet, but this is the six-year approximate capital improvement plan budget. That's about $70 million worth of programs in there, and they are all above quartile four and heavily, heavily ranked in first quartile. So, those are all listed down, down here, and the sidewalk projects that we're aware of and that, that we're planning are in here. We've got our walkways and waterways projects, our overlay, here's some sidewalk programs, et cetera, and the Juanita projects are in here as well. So, this is how we came out with the capital programs. And if you'd like to look at any one element of that, choose, choose one.
Remind me, we did the, the community results, did we do the governance on capital?
There are no governance capital programs.
Yeah, okay. And so, they'll, we didn't score them at all on that, in that, at all, then?
We scored all the capital programs against the community results and the, and the attributes of mandate, demand.
That's what I meant, yes, thank you.
Yes.
So, we did those community results, and then we did, what were those other criteria called? The mandate and the?
Attributes.
Yeah.
Demand, mandated to provide, cost recovery.
Thank you, yes.
Portion of the community served.
Okay. So, when we did that scoring, it wasn't a perfect fit. In, in some cases, we felt like we were trying to put a square peg in a round hole when we were scoring capital against those criteria, but.
We, we did the best we could, you know, making a subjective call on those scores. And what I think we would try to do in the future is, is change the criteria so they're more meaningful for capital and, and not just operations. But we didn't really know that until we went through it. So, it's not perfect, but it gives you some, some guidance on those capital programs. And again, they're, they're all, they're all community programs. There's nothing in here that's of a governance nature that we are doing because it's good governance, we're doing it to serve the community, and you can, you can see that 60 million out of 70 million landed in the top quartile. So, they all achieved really high scores in, in the results that they're adding to So, that is part of this. I'll just show you one other thing real quick unless you have a question at this point.
Dr. Curtis?
So, if we could look at that one that we just had us, we asked, remind me how the quartiles are divided up, because it seems like mathematically, something should end up in each quartile. But you're using something, some, some system of numbers, and you're dividing it in four pieces.
Mm-hmm.
What's that?
Exactly.
So, for your capital projects, what's your four pieces and what's your, is it zero to 100, zero to 200? What's your scoring rating system to get quartiles? Does the question make sense?
The question makes sense. I'm not sure how to answer it. In fact, Rob and I had that same conversation earlier today, and there is a scoring cutoff for each quartile. So, all of the scores for all the results and all the attributes are, are added up, weighted, compiled, and then you can go down the list and there, and then there are breaks that can be set. Okay, here's where we're going to end, end quarter, quartile one, and here's where we're going to end quartile two. And can have some flexibility if you don't think the break makes sense, but I have to admit, those were predetermined by, by the Center for Priority-Based Budgeting, and I haven't fiddled with them.
The only thing I thought of is if, if all the quartile three ones were all ties, then they'd all be in quartile three and nothing would be in quartile four. So, that's the other theoretical thing I came up with.
The term quartile does not mean one-fourth necessarily. It's, it's.
No, I would disagree.
What quarter of priority is quartile four?
No, I would disagree with you. Mathematically, it should be one-fourth, two-fourth, three-fourth, but it's fourth of something.
Oh.
Some number system.
It's fourth of the doll, the, the score values.
The score value.
With a standard deviation of something in there, too.
What's the maximum you can get on that score value? 700, 600, 500, do we even know?
I, I can find out. I can bring all that information back to you.
I'd be curious.
At a later date, if you're interested in the mathematical computation. We just looked at it, does, do those breaks, when you look at where the programs break, do they make sense? Did we go, "Oh, no, that's in a, that's in the fourth quartile. We don't buy that. We think everything from here up should be in a higher quartile." So, we just looked at it for reasonableness.
And my point is, maybe it shouldn't be quartile, it should be.
Tri-tile.
Level one, two, three, and four in priority.
Sorry.
Should be my quartiles.
No?
No? No? Nobody else?
Okay.
Okay, go on.
One other chart I want to show you because I think it's kind of cool is on this page, and then, then we'll wrap up. Oh, I have to load something here. So, this is the combination of all the capital programs and all the other city operational programs, which is why that's $93 million. And this shows how many dollars of that total budget are in programs that make a strong contribution to achieving the results that we desire for the community. So, you can see that out of 90, what was the total, 93 billion, there's 74 of that is making a strong contribution toward achieving a desirable place to live and work. Only eight million, I'm sorry, it's getting so blurry to me, 8 million is achieving, it has a, some, some contribution, and then this orange bar is representative of programs that do not have a strong influence on achieving this particular result. Same thing with safety, the blue bar and the light in the ground. I, I just think this is a cool chart, so I wanted to show it to you. And you can do it not only for all departments, you can do it for capital projects, and you can also look at individual departments. So, a lot of ways to, to manipulate that and get a sense for what the departments and the organization are doing. So, that seemed to me like quite enough to start out tonight, showing you, considering how little time we've had to work with it since we completed it. But if you had questions you wanted us to explore or other things you might like to see, I would really be interested in hearing, hearing those either now or when we go through the budget process.
Councilmember Sperry.
Thank you. This is fun. Thank you for showing this to us. So, in the left-hand column there, there's something that says, "Question mark the five policy questions." And that's been, I'm curious, what are those? Have you had a chance to explore that, or it sounds like something we should know about?
I can tell you a little bit about that. So, as a, as a kind of a little kickoff, they put, Center for Priority-Based Budget created these policy questions that they thought organizations might want to start asking themselves based on this data that they're being provided. Not that these are the only policy questions in the world, but these would, are five that you might want to consider. The first one is, "Are we overproviding to high man, highly mandated programs that have low relevance for the community?" And that sort of goes back to the question you asked earlier about these type of attributes. I mean, there are some programs you're mandated to provide. If they are achieving low results for the community, are there other ways to meet those mandates without putting so many resources into it? So, this gives you a, a tool to do that. And then, there's a second question, "Are we overproviding to our self-imposed mandates?" Are there some sharing options with other political organizations and so forth? So, there's five questions across here.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Are there programs best provided by the private sector? Are there things that maybe we shouldn't even be doing because the private sector could do it better?
Those are great questions.
Then you can, you can filter those and look at the scores to sort of zero in on those programs that might have relevance for that question. And this is, this is an area I haven't explored ver, very much at this point. I just know that they're there.
Thank you.
But that's, you know, really, you know, something during another budget session, if you wanted to have conversations about that, we could.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Can we talk a little bit about budget process and what council's going to expect in October and November and December?
My question, what's next?
So, we are now officially in budget season. The first look at our 15, 16 projections and preliminary 17, 18 budget items will be on October 10th. So, we will give you a very high-level overview of what the departments had, have prepared at that point, because this week and next week, we are finishing our budgets, getting ready to meet with Rob, and we'll have some information available on October 10th. And then, we will have budget discussion and presentation meetings from then on until close to the end of November. And during that time, there'll be two public hearings. We'll have a couple of public hearings on the budget, we'll have a public hearing on the proposed CIP, a public hearing for the tax levy proposal, which we need to adopt it, tax levy, by the end of November. And I'm currently scheduled budget adoption for December 12th, just because there's just a lot of work that we need to get done in the next few months. So, even though in the past, we've tried to get it done by Thanksgiving, I think that's a little too ambitious for this year. We will also be doing a budget amendment during that period of time to make sure that our 15, 16 budget year is clean and we can close, close those budgets without overrunning any of our funds.
So, starting on October 10th, we're assuming council meetings every Monday night. So starting on October 10, we're assuming council meetings every Monday night through December 12, except we will give you Halloween off. That's on a Monday this year. Another thing to, an expectation, we're hoping you give us some flexibility on, is the 10-day advance packet deadline. So for example, October 10, we're going to give you some preliminary numbers, but we won't have them ready this Friday, which is the 10 days in advance. In some cases, we will actually be giving you things at the council meeting, knowing that you're going to have the next couple of months to talk about them. One example will be the preliminary budget book that you get, the 200-plus-page document that you get. That'll probably be handed out at a council meeting in October. But again, you'll have October, November, and through December 12 to be making yourselves familiar with that book.
I think what might be helpful is send you all a copy of the budget calendar. So I can do that this week, so you can kind of see the progression of events, and what has to be done by when, and what our schedule is.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Off to a good start, I think. Staff report?
Three things, Your Honor. Last week, I had the opportunity to meet with the CEO of Puget Sound Energy. Her name is Kimberly Harris. And I also met with her Chief of Operations, Senior Vice President of Operations, Booga Gilbertson, and a couple of other coworkers from PSE. And the meeting was really encouraging, went well. They acknowledged poor power reliability in Kenmore. I was able to describe it firsthand to them. And they also expressed a commitment to do more, to do more than incremental or marginal investment in power reliability. And we even talked about a vision of turning Kenmore around. So taking Kenmore from just being a low-reliability city on the fringe of the PSE system with aging equipment, we could become an example and a model for not just reliability, but for redundancy and resiliency. Resiliency meaning smart grid technology that heals itself. So we could become, actually, instead of known for poor power and clunky systems, we can become known for a model of power reliability. And I emphasize the fact that because we're on the edge of their, you know, the northwest edge of their system, that it behooves them even more to provide redundancy and better equipment. And so they seem to be in general agreement. They expressed interest to plan for making those kinds of investments. So overall, the meeting was encouraging. Also, no one-on-ones this week, if that's okay with you. Obviously, if you have something you'd like to meet with me about, I will definitely make the time available. Also, there's a Sound Cities Association networking dinner on Wednesday, October 5, here in Kenmore. We're hosting it. It's going to be at the Inglewood Golf Club. 5:30 PM is when the doors open. I believe our guest speaker, Mayor Murray of Seattle, will be there. And I believe the program starts about 6, 6:15. And it's going to be in Kenmore, which doesn't happen very often. But a lot of folks that are in the Sound Cities Association think we're kind of a bit of a drive, and so the turnout numbers aren't looking as good as normal. And so we're really encouraging people to come. We really hope that as many of you as possible can make it. If you can, we'll send you an email about it, and then please, please let us know. We'll have Nancy Meehan register for you for the dinner and for the program. We're also going to be inviting our planning commission. And we're also going to be opening up to the community, so individual members of the community can sign up. There's a non-member at Sound Cities rate for the dinner that they can pay, but we're just hoping for good turnout. So if you could look at your calendars, really would love it if you could come. Again, it's October 5, it's a Wednesday night. 5:30 PM is when the doors open. It'll be all wrapped up and done by 8. Unfortunately, I won't be able to make it that night, because I will present, be presenting a factual presentation on walkways and waterways bond measure to the Heritage Society that night at 7. So other than that, that's all I got. So, thank you.
Who do we, contact Nancy?
Nancy Meehan, yes.
Okay. Okay, councilmember comments and initiatives. I'm going to start with Councilmember Danuski tonight.
I have nothing to add.
You're usually the last one.
Nothing for me?
Nothing tonight?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Herbig?
Nothing to add.
Dr. Curtis?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Sperry?
Well, I went to the For Love of Kenmore party, put on by Kent Sturgis and Dennis Mendry, and a bunch of members of the community, to beautify the towers on the cement plant. And I was really impressed. They had live music, they had hay bales, they had sales, they had crafts, big orange buckets everywhere to donate the money. You got to vote on what direction for it. And the best part was, people were coming right off of the trail in their bike stuff, getting the free food. So I definitely felt like it was in the spirit of For the Love of Kenmore, and it was a real community builder.
Can I add a quick little story? So I saw somebody from my church there, and I just said hi to him. Next day at church, they come up to me, and they go, "Rob, it's good to see you yesterday, but what was that event for?" And I said, "Well, you were there. Why are you asking?" And he said, "Well, I just saw a free barbecue, so I came over."
The only thing I would add is that we had our North Shore Park Service area meeting last week, and Del Spivey, who had chaired the board, resigned because he's got some other things he's working on, and it could even impact his duties as a council member, it sounds like, there in Bothell. And so because of that, I will now be chair of the board. And there's not that much going on, but there are a few things. And so that's the only thing I would add.
Great.
Tomorrow morning, I get on an airplane to go back to Madison, Wisconsin. David, Mayor Baker, and I will be attending the National League of Cities University Leadership Summit there. And the topic is leading collaborative communities, a cross-sector approach to building partnerships. And it's something that we're, will probably be involved with to a great degree with Lake Point and other projects around the city. And dealing with different jurisdictions, neighboring jurisdictions, dealing with the county and the state, as well as nonprofit organizations, and possibly in the future, public-private partnerships to get things, get things done for the best way in the city. And some comments here in this priority-based budgeting, that last slide with the policies, the questions that you ask, you know, can this be better done by private industry, or in combination jointly with private or nonprofit groups? And maybe those are better ways to deliver the services for our citizens. So I'm looking forward to it. These summits are, excuse me, usually have some great speakers and motivational kinds of things as well. It's a three-day thing. And then Barbara and I are going to continue on and drive up the northern peninsula much again, and down to Mackinac Island, and then fly home from Traverse City next Tuesday. So it should be a fun time. So I'm looking forward to it. And David and I will let you know what we find out after we get back. So, any other comments from anybody? With that, meeting's adjourned.